Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the county meeting on March fifth. Don, would you do a roll call for us before we start the play? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Donna, would you do a roll call for me?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Marinesco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor is absent this evening, so Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
And Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a motion to excuse the deputy mayor?
Motion to excuse your...
Okay. Second. Motion to second to excuse Deputy Mayor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. All right. Council, how many late items? For the agenda? City manager?
Nothing's left, is there?
Council, have any board reports to share? Moving on.
Sorry, but there's still a meeting this morning, but there was actually nothing on there at this. That was there, and yeah.
That's going to be... All right. Thank you. Any other board reports to share? All right, as the council attends to review the agenda. Your motion?
Move to approve that agenda as published.
Second. Right, we have motion to approve that agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next, we have proclamation with American Red Cross. I won't read that. The American Red Cross Month, March twenty twenty four. Whereas aftermath of the Civil War, Clara Barton's down in the American Red Cross. Its national headquarters, just a few blocks from the White House, was built as a memorial to the women of the Civil War. For nearly one hundred and forty-three years, the employees, volunteers, and supporters of the American Red Cross have met loss and disaster with compassion and care. They remind us that we must leave no one behind. During the March, during March of this year, we celebrate the ordinary citizens performing extraordinary acts of service, and we honor the Red Cross for its commitment to making our country and our world a better place. Whereas, across America, we have seen the word of the Red Cross person. When hurricanes make landfall, floodwaters rise, the Red Cross is ready to provide food, shelter, and emergency supplies. When wildfires spread in tornadoes upriver communities, volunteers arrived from around the country to help survivors heal, recover every building. We also turned to the American Red Cross to respond to crises overseas in the wake of natural disasters, preparation for emergencies before they happen. The old saying is still true today, the Red Cross is always there. Whereas, for the American Red Cross Month, we encourage Americans to learn more about the steps involved with donating blood by visiting www redcross.org. If you can give blood, we hope you will. We also encourage our community to learn or teach first aid, participate in sound, the alarm events to prevent wildfires. It is in our community's DNA to lift each other up, especially on the front lines of emergencies and disasters. Now, therefore, we the council, city of Shelton, hereby proclaim March twenty fourth, March twenty twenty four is American Red Cross Month, and we encourage all citizens to observe this month with relevant programs, ceremonies, activities, and support the word serves of American Red Cross. And I will sign that tonight after our meeting. Right. We have one business item tonight, and it is Karen, going to talk to me about a revenue payment grant fund on the Republican Highway.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As I think I mentioned at the last meeting, last year, we applied for and received Transportation Improvement Board grant funds in the magnitude of about three point seven million dollars, with some match money of about four hundred thousand dollars. Most of that is going to be covered in another grant that we received, about three hundred and eighty thousand. That's being dedicated towards improving Ice Street, that intersection there, and putting crossings in, those kinds of things. What I have here is basically today is to educate you on this a bit, and to just let you know that we want to move forward with acquiring that money. There is a grant agreement that's been included in your package. Again, no decision today. This is our first read for this, but the intent is we'd like to basically reconstruct. And when I say reconstruct, I'm talking about the asphalt components out there on the highway north. Myself, as well as a few staff persons, spent about half a day out there, walked the entirety of the entire project, and identified items that need to be at least looked at. I know four point two million, I think, total is, it sounds like a lot of money, but the reality is, especially when you're dealing with asphalt and having to dig it out, it gets super expensive super fast. So we're going to, we're going to approach this as we're going to, we've identified what, what needs to happen out there. Ideally, I think ultimately what we want to try to get is the new asphalt section, and when I say that, I'm talking about from C Street all the way to Fallsfield. We're going to try to, a lot of the curb and gutter and sidewalk are not bad shape. There are a couple of places where it is in bad shape. That'll be, need to be replaced. In addition, we have a signal out there that's currently hanging off of wires. If we can, we'd like to get some mast arms and a new controller box for that. We'll see how that plays out. Like I said, it gets super expensive, super fast, especially if you're digging out a foot of asphalt and then having to put that back. So just, again, education purposes right now, to let you know, next meeting, my hope is that the council will consider passing this so that we can get going. The other little caveat to this is it's not a federal aid project right now, but the money that we're bringing in this match is a federal aid project. So what it's going to do is it's going to federalize the entire process, which is not wonderful news, but it means just a ton more work. But the reality is, it's, this project is definitely worth it, and we'll put in the time. So unless there's any additional questions, that's the first item.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to place resolution number one three six zero dash zero two four on the action agenda for March nineteen, city council meeting for the consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Okay. We have a motion to second to place resolution number one three zero dash zero two two four on the action agenda for March nineteen, twenty twenty four, for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Okay. First action item is Mary.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, Mayor, council. I brought this to you last time. If you recall, we had a discussion about pavement condition index PCI. Basically, that is something that you want to do every three to five years. It has become kind of a quasi-conditioned grant awards in the sense that you want to have at least all your roadways identified and the types of condition that they're in. So what we're proposing is, and in two thousand twenty-three, four, two thousand twenty-four, you all had budgeted sixty K towards this. We reached out to Transpo, who is, they're very well known. I've worked with them a lot myself, at least on the east side, as well as the Auburn, Kent area. They're very well known in this industry. They've done several of these PCI reports, and basically, they look at twenty different parameters, and then basically assign a score to that section of roadway, zero to a hundred, hundred being its top-notch and great condition, zero meaning it's in poor condition. So what we'll get is basically a GIS map with all the roads identified, and then we'll have to prioritize overlays and those kinds of things. It also helps develop a work program for our guys to do maintenance work out there, which I think is a very efficient and effective way to do things. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like the opportunity to move forward with this, using that on-call consultant roster to move forward with this. I suspect within three or ten months or so, we'll have this completed. Happy to bring that back to the council, where you can actually see what the work product looks like. Unless there's other questions, nothing has changed since we discussed this last question.
Thank you. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And reading resolution number one three one one dash two one two four.
Resolution number one three one one dash zero one two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on-call consultant roster work order for conducting a pavement condition index study.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Move a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three one one dash zero one two four as presented.
Second. All right, comments or questions? For motion to second to adopt resolution number one three one one dash zero one two four as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Eric. Department Director Jay Harris has reported about finding vehicle from storm.
Mayor, this council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. The twenty twenty-four budget included fifty thousand dollars to purchase a new replacement vehicle for the stormwater technician. It's going to replace the two thousand nine Ford Escape that is definitely near as light. Anyways, it will improve safety and reliability for us. We're proposing to get an all-wheel-drive vehicle. That way, we can use it and implement weather, that sort of thing. We budgeted fifty thousand. The cost of the vehicle is about thirty-five thousand, which is good. And I've had no changes to the proposed resolution since the last meeting.
Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Maybe a reading resolution number one three one five dash zero one two four.
Resolution number one three one five dash zero one two four. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase order for the acquisition of a twenty twenty-four Ford Maverick all-wheel-drive pickup to support stormwater department operations.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number one three one five dash zero one two four as presented.
Second. Comments or questions? About getting the cheaper. Right, we have motion to second to adopt resolution number one three one five dash zero one two four as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. All right. Now, Jordan, Department of Recreation, Fred Jordan, reports about commitment to the Parks Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I bring back to you our open position for the Parks Advisory Committee. We had one open position, and we're planning to fill that with our current Catherine McDowell. She would be committed to an incomplete term, which would end at the end of December of twenty twenty-four. Other than that, no changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Donna, sorry. Thank you, Jordan. Donna, does that have a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the Department of Catherine McDowell, the Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Committee.
Comments or questions? I knew it would be gone very long. All right. We have a motion to second to approve the appointment of Catherine McDowell, Parks and Recreation Systems Advisory Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. All right. Now, Senior Planner Jason Doe, Department of Recreation, reports about a pool on Meadow Edge final plat.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As I relayed in your February twentieth meeting, we're kind of here for more of an administrative task at this point. The Meadows Edge final plat that we're asking for authorization of the mayor to sign on behalf of the city council forum was approved through Mason County as a thirty-six lot residential plat just north of the Shelton Springs subdivision, across from the high school, up south of Island Lake. The city reviewed it for utilities, water, sewer, storm drainage, roadways, parks, you name it, lot sizes, and also annex the site because they're going to be relying on city streets, city utilities, everything to support the plat. All the improvements are being installed per the approvals and per city standard. The improvements that aren't completed yet have been fully bonded as allowed by state law. And nothing's changed since the last meeting, and we're just asking for the council to authorize the mayor to sign on the final plat map, so it can be recorded later this week.
Thank you, Jason. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to sign the final plat for the Meadows Edge subdivision.
I guess.
Comments or questions?
Will we talk?
I wouldn't talk yet.
Let's go.
Thirty-six. Eric. We have a motion to second to authorize me to sign the final plat for Meadows Edge subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Right. City Manager Mark Ullrich, he referred about Mason County garbage rates.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Back to you again from the briefing two weeks ago on the February twentieth. Just as kind of refresher, back in twenty seventeen, the city entered into agreement with Mason County Garbage Supervise Recycling, Yard Waste and Garbage Services in the city of Shelton. Per the contract with Mason County Garbage, there are allowable increases in rates outright. Those include the CPI, basically an inflationary index increase with a floor of two point five percent and a ceiling of four point five percent annually for the first ten years, after the ten years that floor and that ceiling are removed. Second increase allowed outright is passing on of the tipping fees, the dumping fees out in Mason County transfer station. So if Mason County increases the, the fee to dump your garbage out there, those are passed on directly. Those are realized by Mason County Garbage when they dump those, which are passed on directly to the customer. In section AE, there is a section for unforeseen costs. And these incorporate any changes in federal, state, or local laws or regulations that result in changes in circumstances or hardships for the contractor in forming the agreement. So Mason County Garbage, as you remember, has put forth a request to increase some rates based on those unforeseen charges due to increased fuel costs based on Climate Commitment Act implications, and I believe that that will be the entire, the entirety of the system there, but, or how it's set up, but the carbon reduction and the increased fuel rates are, which is what may be referred to as a gas tax, but so. So those fees would be, as proposed by Mason County Garbage, at twenty cents per month for residential customers and a dollar sixty-three per month for commercial customers. I provided council with an email to answer some of the questions previously, so hopefully that answered some of the questions you had after the briefing, and I know Mr. White is here to answer any other questions that you may have if you see fit moving forward.
Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Ever reading resolution number one three one eight dash zero two two four?
Resolution number one three one eight dash zero two two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing Mason County Garbage Company to increase solid waste and recycling rates in the city of Shelton through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a motion? All for motion? Resolution number one three one eight dash zero two two four dies per lap. All right. We have another item from Mark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Bringing to you tonight, the resolution approving the MOU with Mason County for point oh nine funds that be distributed to the city, the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for upgrades of the satellite wastewater treatment plant's headworks system. So that's basically sums it up. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
We have a public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Read resolution number one three one nine dash zero two two four.
Resolution number one three one nine dash zero two two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with Mason County for rural county point oh nine sales tax funds in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I approve resolution that's correct one. Yep, we have, I approve resolution number one three one nine dash zero two two four as presented.
Second. Question. All right, we have motion to second to approve resolution number one three one nine dash zero two two four as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. All right, the last action item is also from Mark.
All right. Keep going. Council, for your benefit, I'm asking for a waiver of the three-touch rule tonight. This is a program and project that's been in place since, let's see, mid-year twenty twenty-two, correct? Yeah. The DCR, the Designated Crisis Responders Contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization. This, this funds are embedded designated crisis responder in our police department. We've seen great results from having this individual here and having this service provided. The contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization allows the city to receive a hundred thousand dollars to offset the costs, the total costs of that program through fiscal year twenty twenty-four, starting January one through December thirty-first. The second contract within the package that you have today is with Olympic Health and Recovery Services. They are the organization that provides the DCR. So TMVHO, Thurston Mason Behavioral Health, provides the funds to the city. Olympic Health and Recovery Services provides the actual staff to provide that service. It's essentially a net zero project. We receive a hundred thousand dollars from TMVHO to provide the service. We pay OCRS a hundred thousand dollars to have, have staff in place. So our, our police department is very happy with the service provided. The DCR has been in place since day one, so it's familiar with the community, some of the clientele that is regularly in place in this community as well. And continually checks on those, works with Mason General, the county sheriff's office, as well as other jurisdictions within, within Shelton. So happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the three-touch rule and approve the contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health and Missionary Services Organization and the Olympic Health Recovery Services for designated crisis responder services and authorize the city managers.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Can we get to?
There is not funding available at this point for two. We, Mason County has oh, they're not DCRs, but they are responders, sorry, yeah, within that, that we work closely with as well. So there is some backup if our, if our DCR is not in, in-house or, or working today.
I've heard great names from our first responders about the DCR, and the corresponders don't have as much authority of DCR, so their DCR being locally can actually help the, the corresponders in situations where they can't take somebody that needs to go somewhere, you know?
Yes.
DCR are very important, very successful, in my opinion. Glad that we've got partners.
They can actually get individuals that are in crisis committed and get even, get them into the services they need when they're not able to make those decisions themselves.
We have a motion to second to waive the three-touch rule and approve the contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Administration Services Organization and Olympic Health and Recovery Services for designated crisis responder services and authorize the city manager to sign. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Mark, do you have a report tonight?
Just a couple of things for you tonight, Mayor. Welcome Kathy McDowell back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Prior to her term on commission, I worked with Kathy on that committee a few years ago. So great having Kathy back in the fold there with, with that group. They do important work for us in the community, and it's great, great sounding board for our residents to be involved in. We had some relatively good news today. Out of the state legislature, the House and the Senate both agreed on a, on their supplemental budget today that includes two hundred thousand dollars for design of the Simpson Railroad Multimodal Trail Project. So we'll be seeing less. It's not, it hasn't been adopted yet, so I guess I won't say it's, it's definite, but I, I think it's, it all signs point to that being included in the budget. We're still waiting the transportation budget, the potential for some funds for Wall Street and Boulevard to be included there. Session's supposed to end on Thursday, so hopefully we will know soon, and we'll have some additional funds. Thanks for our thirty-fifth delegation, which has been worked for us by diligently over at Olympia. See, we are working on the, the welcome video, the information video that's on the city's website now. Many of you have noticed that it's out of date. So the, the organization CGI that we've worked with in the past is coordinating the update of, of that video to highlight Shelton and the amenities that we have available to us. It's no cost to the city. They sell advertising to support that video. It's embedded in, on, on the city's website. So you should see some information on that fairly soon as we work through the progression of of updating that, that video. That is all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for the city manager? Thanks, Mark. And we're now, with general public comment, are invited to make comments on the topic that's on the agenda. Donna, we haven't signed another one.
We don't have anyone signed up, Mr. Mayor. Let me look at Zoom here. Hey, we have Colleen Carmichael on Zoom.
Good evening, Marinesco and fellow council members. My name is Colleen. I shouldn't be. Can you not hear me? Still can't hear me?
Hold on, Donna, can you hear me?
I don't know.
Donna, can you hear me now? No? Okay.
What's wrong?
That way. Donna?
Log back in here. Well, she's logging in.
She's logging back in.
Is there anybody else?
There isn't anyone else on Zoom at this time.
What is being prompted? I'm sure Mark probably wants me to.
We have to gain speech that we can maybe log up on one of the computers here, maybe here.
Yeah, see if, see if she can log back in if there's something on her.
Okay, I just want to give a state of Shelton address, kind of like the president and the governor does with the state of the union, state of the state. All right, let's see, we had three individuals walking their dog. They took a shit in the crosswalk that I had to have both of them go back and clean out. This has happened three times. They both threatened to pull me out of the truck and, and beat my ass. Can you imagine that? All the violence that we have? Chased off six individuals from the back of Second Street Hair Design, where they're notorious for hanging out, doing drugs, hiding in the back. One was in the front by the alcove. We had a mental, mental health situation by one of our council or one of our council member stores. Lady had no shoes, crazy babble, belongings all over the sidewalk, deviated at least a dozen individuals, including a county commissioner that didn't want to have that situation right in there in front of it. That individual ended up in somebody's store making snow angels on the floor, screaming, yelling, causing all kinds of issues. Why are they even out in the first place? All right. Let's see. We had a full-on make-out session going on between two individuals sitting at the Evergreen Square on the bench. We have a new car that's parked in the Evergreen Square, been there for like four out of the five nights. Don't we have a no-street camping ordinance? I think we passed that. I wonder if I did a, a request on that, how many times we've actually had it enforced. I bet you it's zero. We had convicts dropped off at the transit center. Individuals sitting in their trucks are going into, going into their businesses, didn't even want to get out of their car and go into their businesses for fear of that. We had two people sleeping underneath our train with their dog. And let's talk about dogs. Don't we have a dog licensing? Don't we have a dog at large? You know, we don't enforce those any, anymore, I guess. So what are they even doing with pets? Community lifelines continued conditional use permit violations. I mean, how many violations does it take to have somebody have a license pull? Nine hundred and twenty-seven? Is it six hundred and twenty-eight? Is it before we increase their bed space from thirty-five to fifty-five, or is it after fifty-five? Because ever since they've been approved, or we started to hear them on that, there's been, I've got council's pictures. I'll be sending them to you guys. People sleeping on their property, drugs, messes, garbage, free, you know, dogs running around everywhere. We have a, a, a bike wagon that's been showing up in different parking spots that the gentleman's been sleeping in. As far as I know, you're not supposed to sleep on a single story anywhere in the city. That's not, you know, there's not an ordinance. You can't have that. Yet we have the bike rack tied up on the back or chained up in the back St. David's pantry. So maybe we go down there and take a picture of that, take a look at that and get that removed. So there you go. Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, we'll see if. Okay, we'll see if Colleen can go.
Can you guys hear me this time?
Come again.
I can hear you, but it's echoey.
Yeah.
This is not my night. It doesn't bother me. I'd be happy to speak. So, good evening, Marinesco, fellow councilors. My name is Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. In a recent Urban Affairs Review published in December of twenty twenty-three, a study was conducted to see if quality of life ordinances were successful in getting homeless into services. The quality of life ordinance requires unsheltered homeless people to refrain from sleeping, sitting, sheltering, or conducting other acts of living on the streets and urge them to utilize social services and find indoor housing. But shelters are overburdened and low-income housing is not available. So enforcement of these ordinances has forced many homeless residents to either violate the law by sheltering in public or by moving along to somewhere more hidden and less safe. The Coalition on Homelessness studied this dynamic known as the churn, whereby quality of life policing mostly results in homeless people moving from neighborhood to neighborhood and town to town, but without reducing the number of homeless over the long run. Data from the survey also indicates that forty percent of respondents did did try to use indoor shelters. But seventy-three percent of those were turned away from overcrowded shelters at least once. Based on this data, quality of life policing could perhaps be justified from a coercive care perspective if there were substantial increase in services. The fact remains that the strong majority of respondents reported inadequate services and deteriorating quality of life. If policymakers want to reduce the number of homeless people in their city, data supports affordable housing and increased services. In Washington State, the Department of Commerce and the U.S. Census found that forty-five thousand nine hundred units of affordable housing, that's fifty percent AMI or less, need to be built every year for the next twenty-two years to meet the demand. And in twenty twenty-three point a time time count for Mason County, there are three hundred and eighty-one individuals who were homeless and two hundred and forty-six of those individuals were unsheltered. According to the twenty twenty-three National Alliance End Homeless Data, Washington State's Chronic Homeless Population accounts for thirty-one percent of the total homeless. So using those percentages, Mason County has a hundred and eighteen individuals in need of permanent supportive housing and the other two hundred and sixty-three in need of rapid rehousing, transitional housing, or emergency shelter. We can use this data to help providers apply for more grants to fill the gaps, but we are still in desperate need of more affordable housing units in Mason County. Thank you.
That is all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Contact the new live session tonight. Right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March nineteen, twenty twenty-four, six P M. We also have a session, March twelve, six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six thirty-three P M.